All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, next item for business is the public hearing over the alcohol license transfer. To bring this up to speed, I will turn to Floyd if you want to update council and introduce our guest tonight.
Okay, sure. So, Mr. George Harris, he's right here with us. I've asked him to come. And he'll be prepared to give remarks as needed. He is looking to acquire Dixie Dogs. Dixie Dogs already has a alcohol license and a business license. So this will be for a transfer. Mr. Harris has already provided information to me. That information has been provided to you in your package. Also, I am awaiting a background check from the Cowee County Sheriff's Office as well as supplement. So, the request tonight will be to do an alcohol license transfer per your ordinance in contention that we get all the documentation that is contested based on mine and their due.
Is it a prorate?
Has been requested. I'm open to council's suggestion.
The prorating the alcohol license transfer.
It's a transfer.
It's a transfer, so, okay.
So, there's no, I mean, there's, he doesn't pay an additional fee.
Okay.
Right. That fee is already paid at the first of the year.
Well, Mr., well Dixie Dogs has paid their fees. However, my reading of the ordinance is that there is an additional one hundred dollar fee for the transfer.
Well, that's the application.
Yes.
Yes, the application fee is one hundred. But as far as the license fee, it's already paid.
His, his, his deal renewed at the time Dixie Dogs.
Yeah, well, it terminated it decently. That's why we were new.
Hi. Is there anything else?
No, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris, would you like to speak or introduce yourself or talk about what your plans are?
Uh, no real major plans to change anything. I've acquired Dixie Dogs from Brian. He's just, uh, kind of making decisions for his family, spend more time with them. Um, I own three other businesses, all based out of Cowee. I live in Sharpsburg, not the town of, but down in Cowee. Electrical contractor, clearing, forestry, mulching, grading business, and a towing business. So, I figured, why not own a restaurant? But, uh, we have started the acquisition. We've kind of taken over the operations. Everything's going pretty well. Obviously, we have a few pieces of red tape to get through with you guys and just kind of go from there. No major changes whatsoever. We're going to try to take the base of what he's built, go with it. I have no interest in getting a liquor license at all. Maybe that'll change in the years, but, uh, we just want to kind of take what he has built, enhance it, make it our own a little bit. Just kind of keep the small-town feel, family atmosphere, that kind of thing. It'd be pretty simple, really. I just, uh, I've been friends and colleagues with Brian for a long time. We've been talking about this for a while. And when it came, uh, say, available, I didn't want to see it go anywhere else. So, we're going to try to keep it, you know, kind of basically small-town feel what he's built, so.
Well, we certainly appreciate your investment. Uh, we definitely appreciate that you're taking over a well-regarded and well-run business. We like to see, uh, multiple entrepreneurship, uh, show up, so we appreciate that. Has Brian filled you in on the growlers ordinance that we were working on and working through?
He has. It has been passed, according to me.
Okay, it has been, yes.
Right. Uh, that's something that we may think about down the road. In fact, uh, he and I had a brief conversation yesterday. The fact that he's already been thinking about another venture that might take less of his time. I said, "Well, why don't we incorporate that here with that?" So, that's something very major interest to him, not me. So, I thought it might be, we can bring that in, kind of thing. But yes, sir, I'm fully aware of that, and that may be something we work on here in the near future.
Excellent.
You're basically going to keep the same hours and all that?
For now, eleven to nine Tuesday to Friday, um, which is the reason he has created that was just lack of staff. We're, as soon as we can, reincorporate Saturdays, same thing, probably eleven to nine. Everybody needs a day of rest. I don't want anything open on Sunday. But if we merge into that, grow into that, um, we may have to.
He hadn't been opening on Saturday?
No, sir, not a while. He wasn't, he was for a while. In fact, at first, he was open Monday through Saturday.
I thought he was closing on Sunday.
Yeah, he went, he went back and forth. Uh, he was trying to test the waters, just based on health that he had, didn't have. So, a lot of my family's coming in. My wife's able to quit her job to help. My middle stepson's going to be running the bag. We've got, we're blessed with some family and options here that he didn't necessarily have. So, good and bad, I guess, we're going to factor. So, yes, sir, for now.
The business was growing, so.
Oh, yeah. He's, he's built a great base, and I'm in there quite a bit anyway. We've got a great following. The patrons love it. I've tried to pay attention to what they want, things to change. So, we're gonna, we're trying to learn it and then just make baby step changes as we go, that kind of thing, and just try to keep, you know, everybody as happy as we possibly can. Everybody loves to eat and drink, so.
It's one of the things about County, County, you go to these restaurants, I don't feel like what they're weekly, is they all crowded?
Yes, sir. People are going to go eat, that's for sure. So, very good. Any other questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Harris. We look forward to it. If there's anything that, that the town can do for you, please just let us know.
Thank you so much. And so far, I do want to say this, uh, been a pleasure to work with especially Mr. Jones here. I'll tell you, he is a, he is an asset to your township. I, I'm not just saying that because he's sitting here. I walk in and that man is working, and he is helpful, and he is phenomenal. So, thank you so much.
Excellent, excellent. We'd love to hear that. Thank you so much. Do we have any other questions about alcohol transfer?
How long are we looking at before we complete any of this?
You've already submitted the sheriff's department thing?
We ha, he has, and I believe that's what you're ready.
I'm looking on the background check. I know one of the formats going through the ordinance, one of the forms I need you to fill. So, I think that can be done rather.
Okay.
When this thing gets completed, is ready to go, basically?
Yes. Well, we're, we're working on it, but that's the request to council to approve it. Contention on getting the rest of it in, and then for me, you're not required.
Do we have to have a motion on this?
How does this affect his ability to serve alcohol in the meantime?
Right until we get.
So, Brian is still on staff as payroll, and he qualifies the alcohol license as far as, and I, from all the reading and research I've done, I feel like that is, um, legal, but you guys can tell me otherwise.
That's my understanding.
Just want to make sure, want any hiccups in your?
Yes, sir. No, thank you. Thank you.
Still lands with, um, Brian until actually we effectively.
The license goes with the person, not with the, with the business?
Correct. Correct, I guess.
Uh, next item under, well, the first item under new business is to review our bank balance. Uh, that was the separate sheet of paper that was stacked on top of your, um, file or your agenda packet for tonight. Um, the main thing on this, uh, report is that we are just finishing up the first quarter of the fiscal year, and we have received forty-three percent of our budget, while only spending sixteen percent of it. Now, before the, the forty-three percent of the budget received, we were not anticipating the seventy-five hundred dollars from Pike. The franchise, uh, electric franchise fee was almost five thousand dollars higher. And then, our insurance business licenses is nearly four hundred dollars higher. So, that's right at about, you know, eleven, twelve thousand dollars extra that we were not anticipating. So, it's, uh, it's nice to have this much of the budget received this early end of the year. And of course, my main metric that I use is the percent that is paid out compared to the quarter. First quarter of the year, we've only spent sixteen percent. So, kudos to, uh, to Mr. Jones and staff for, for watching the dollar amounts. You said Pike? What is Pike? Uh, Pike, yeah, engineering and electric. They're the ones that did the, um, the easement for the electrical boxes up on the triangle. They're the ones that we're negotiating with for Georgia Power.
Okay. But here's the power, Academy and C Troops, you said, said Pike.
Uh, yes, sir. So, we weren't anticipating that thirty-five hundred dollars, um, at all. So, we, uh, so that, that, that was a big, a big bug to it. But we have received a hundred and eleven, almost a hundred and twelve thousand, uh, two hundred and sixty. So, if there's no other questions under the bank balance, we'll go ahead and move on to our old business. The old business is generically titled project updates. If you look through your package, you'll see a lot of the information from the work session that we already, uh, reviewed. The biggest thing on the project update is that Senator Osop's office put out a call for congressionally-directed spending. Uh, the town of Sharpsburg submitted three applications, one for sewer, one for transportation improvements, which is the fifty-four north corridor, and then for a municipal renovation, which would incorporate renovating the veteran property for whatever use we decide and get public input on. And then also the renovation for Arbor Valley for whatever future use we decide. The sewer installation, which the entire packet is in here in your, um, agenda packet. The sewer installation was a six point three million dollar ask, five million federal, the balance to be matched. Transportation improvement was a twelve million dollar ask. Um, and then the municipal renovation was a two million dollar ask, uh, with five hundred thousand dollars in match. Um, we don't know if any of these are going to be funded. We don't, it's not quite a shot in the dark because we, we did some research and put together a fairly strong applications. But if it falls in our lap, it falls in our laps and we're able to do great things for the town.
I won't look at a dip portion of that, but what, what are you going to do with six million dollars? Build a two billion dollar sewer system?
We're gonna, I don't know. Mm-hmm. We, we will upgrade it and provide service for six million dollars worth. And whether some of that goes to capacity, whether some of that goes to construction infrastructure, um, it may, you know.
Expansion of the community center.
Just depends.
When you say match, where, where's the match coming from?
Um, so that's going to come from a combination of either our ARPA money, our lost money, which is local option sales tax, and then our SLOSS money. The larger match amount, the one million dollars for sewer and then the two and a half million for transportation, will come from our partners. I know that we can get the match for the sewer. I've already had that conversation. Transportation improvement, that's a little more roll of the dice because that's going to be DOT, that's going to be the county. So, that's a little more of a roll of the dice, but those are questions we don't have to answer right now, but we've got plans and projections for them. And the good thing about it is now that these are written and they're out there, we can use them and resubmit them. So, if we don't get any of this, then we can come back and resubmit them at, at other places.
What's the timeline on something like that as far as, does it give you any idea of like, is there any way of seeing, okay, your application's been reviewed? It's been, do we have some sort of, are we just in the dark until we get a phone call?
We're kind of in the dark. I know that they have just finished FY twenty-two. In fact, I want to say the president had just signed the FY twenty-two budget. So, there, and this is for FY twenty-three. So, we're looking at about a year before the funds are actually, if the project is approved and if it's selected, then we'll have at least a year before the budget is signed. But we'll probably know, probably, hopefully, within the first handful of months where we are on the senator's list. Whether we're in, whether we're on the ballot, or whether it wasn't selected. Um, as far as the back parking lot, we are still waiting on, uh, materials. Uh, the biggest problem is finding the pipes, the underground pipes. No one, people are just behind on making concrete. They can't, they can't get the pipes for them. And that's really what we're waiting on. As soon as we can get the materials and the materials are on the way, that's when they will start doing some construction stuff out there. Um, I'm hoping that I'll have a week's notice or more. I may only have a couple of days. So, staff knows to be, letting Richard know and others know that the parking lot may be unavailable. And we'll just get the word out as soon as we, as soon as we, uh, hear something.
We have a list of all the people who participate in activities here in the community center. So, as soon as we have a date, we are able to then contact them immediately and let them know what the status is. It's been a very short.
Is that going to take up our whole Main Street? Is that what we're anticipating? We could have people park a little, like a block up and come down or?
Um, well, no, if we could reach, if we could reach agreement for parking, then yes, we could, but that, that hasn't happened yet. Um, do we have any other questions on?
Because we need that money, because that means that's our rental money for bringing out this facility, so.
It's not going to take, once they start, it's up to four days.
It, it, it's not going to take them long. I don't think it'll be that, quite that quick.
Well, within a week, maybe?
It should take that long. Yes, sir. It should be pretty fast.
Really, within a week?
To have it done? To have the parking lot completed?
Possibly. I mean, maybe, of course, that'll be with.
Ask off or cancel?
Ask off. Do I have any questions or comments from public about any projects? Ms. Polly? Harris? Uh, Mr. Jones, anything that I left off on the projects update or anything that you want to add?
Uh, actually, if I could, I've got some items about the, um, the bank balance, but I can take that as much as you'd like.
Um, your preference, whichever one you want to do.
Your call there.
Okay. Just send it to the clerk's minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, all right. So, now we reach the public comment section. Uh, Ms. Polly, do you have anything?
Mister cameraman.
Mister cameraman, I know we do too.
That's it.
That's it, all right. Uh, any other comments from the public? Calling the council, I will start down here closest to me. Uh, Mr. Teagle.
Uh, let's see. You've got a, uh, pothole that's growing up there at the intersection of Old Sixteen and One Fifty-four. By the high, by the high school.
Oh, the edge of the road?
Yeah, you're probably, probably a good storm away from having a pothole there.
Okay.
That state road, Tom?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think it does.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And we've got one at the intersection of Church and Tarrentine as well.
Yep, okay.
On the, if you're turning left on the, on Church going to the south on Tarrentine.
Um, Floyd, I have asked the county to fix the pothole on Sunset Drive. I'm sorry, there's a pothole on Sunset Drive I had the county fix. We may want to add that edge failure at Church and Tarrentine. When they send us the email saying they're coming over there and they're getting to it, we may want to add Church and Tarrentine. Because that's only going to be a couple of scoops of hot mix and.
Well, that's what Tarrentine are. Yes, Tarrentine is, that, that one up there at the high school was, that's a, cut a piece out?
Yes.
Redo the road.
Mm-hmm. Yep. All right. Anything else?
Oh, yeah. That homeless guy that we had, that we knew about, he's reappeared. I mentioned that to you earlier. I don't know what y'all want to do about that. We've got a walk with a beard.
Yeah.
I saw him way up earlier, other day.
Floyd, do you want to, um, fill council in on Safeville's response?
Sure. So, it's all I meant to you and that, I spoke to Safeville. And I wanted to get some clarity on some answers to your question. Per Paul Hartman, first of all, to be clear, I believe we're talking about the residents on Two Twenty-Five Tarrentine. Is that correct?
One of their.
I believe that's the one.
Two Twenty-Five.
Okay. Spoke to, uh, Safeville, we looked at it. You asked, first of all, about building permits. When do they expire?
Yeah.
That was the first question. So, I was partly right in my reply to you. They have the ability to perpetuate over time, okay? So, they have a one hundred and eighty-day, um, shelf life on them. If a person comes in on, say, day one seventy-nine and asks for a permit, that restarts the clock in the one hundred and eighty days. So, it goes perpetually. If they don't come in and get a permit within a hundred and eighty days, it expires. Looking at what they have done, they've exceeded one hundred and eighty days of a permit request. So, they are expired with the golden permit. So, that's answer one to your question. Answer two to your question with regard to the guy living at the house. What I was told is that that house is very old. As a result, it was probably built before there was ever a building permit or department. To that end, um, certificate of occupancy's or COOs, or more or less grandfathered in. And so, there doesn't need to be a COO for the person that lived there or to reside there. The only way it can be res- um, resented, as I was told, is something catastrophic, fire, tornado, something like that. So, with the question to a COO, as I was told, he can still be there without a certificate of occupancy.
It was two different questions. I don't, as far as, I was just wondering what the status was. It hadn't been a, it hadn't been anybody up here in quite, quite a while. And I think this guy, I think he's actually living in the shed behind him, which might change that a little bit. Teagle, what do y'all want to do? Like, y'all want to just ignore it? I mean, tell me?
Um, we have offered, uh, this individual help before, um, but he is perfectly happy doing what he's doing. Um, short of a complaint from the landowner, I don't know what we have the authority to do. I mean, this is private property. I don't know that we can go in there and roust somebody from somebody else's property without the property owner's request, can we? I mean, this service, I don't want to do.
Well, I, I mean, I'm not familiar with the circumstances. Of course, you do have your unsafe structure, or that you go through, but Safeville would have to certify that the structure was unsafe. And then you would go through the process, uh, in your ordinance to either order the property to be repaired or be demolished. Under certain circumstances, you could go, if, if, if Safeville will say it's unsafe and unsafe being in there, you can go through a process, um, notifying both him and the property owner, uh, and, and, and get a court order to evict him. So, but I, I'm not familiar, so. From what I'm understanding is that Paul's not willing to tell you the house is unsafe.
He was, he didn't tell me it was unsafe, so, not good.
Well, you know, anybody that looks at it covered, definitely safe. I virtually back and half the roof's missing.
Right.
Not, not missing like they took it down and then repaired it. It wadded away. So, it's, it's.
But, but that sounds like that, you get Paul to initiate the process.
Again, my purpose is not to, not, not depress for that. I'm just, I was just curious.
Who is, who is the property owner?
Kevin Carrington. He's the developer out of Henry County Locust Grove. And he purchased the house and was working on it, and then material prices went up, so he paused everything. And of course, that's when he went over the six months living for the permit. So, I think the first thing to do is reach out to him and live in the permanent.
Well, what about, did somebody, does he know somebody that's living there?
I believe he does. Uh, I also have had a conversation with Mr. Carrington and let him know that this fellow is here. And I did that several months ago, because I saw him back over the winter when it got so cold. And Kevin said, "Well, he's, he's doing some work for me, and I'm just helping him out by picking him up there." He didn't tell me that the guy was staying there, and he may not have known at that point. But he did say that it's okay for the guy to be there for him to be picked up for work, or whatnot.
Picking up somebody that's homeless to take them to work is, reminds me of, uh, the guy that said he liked enjoying dating homeless girls because after the date, he could drop them off anywhere.
So, I don't get, I got, I don't think he's causing any problems.
No.
Well, he, I don't think he is either. But what about the next guy? That's, you know, that's a question.
Is he here locally to begin with?
He's been around for a few, that's the topic here. He's been around for five years. Is he originally from here, Sharpsburg or?
Uh, yes, Wellsburg Station. He has family that lives in Wellsburg Station.
Well, I said, I'm not a person to, to do anything. I just, I was asking a question. As far as that, uh, that piece of property, obviously, he's not living, that requires that. Because that section of town looks like, looks like Kiev. Some bombs here.
Anything else?
Uh, someone's going to wait on the backyard project to address some of the busted up, uh, busted up brickwork, curbs, fences. And I've just noticed like that. Floyd, you told me that that's been around for a long time, the, the, the trim over the, over the barbecue pit out here. Big chunk is missing.
Oh, okay.
There was, I looked, it was a piece like this on the side facing the south, and now there's a, like, four-foot section.
That's been there for a long while.
Just add it to the list.
So, is that the idea, is to wait until we do everything?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is.
Can we choose a color and paint at the same time?
That, I don't know if we need, and what you're referring to is refreshing the community center.
Yeah.
Right. Um, do we need to, I'd like to get the concept from Mary and Elizabeth on, as far as the color and what it would look like and stuff like that, so.
Okay.
Do you want to talk to them about doing, okay?
Yeah.
Have them pick out the palette and all that?
Yeah, in conversations with them, they were telling me to do the, do the, uh, library, send me the back.
It's just color.
Right, mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, I'll do that.
I want to put curtains in it. I'm trying to locate some little thin curtains for the library so we can make it cute inside. So.
I'm sure we want it cute.
I've got to make it.
We want it as cute as we can.
Stan, you have, uh, you have anything for calling your council?
You mentioned something about Arbor Valley, though. What did you want here?
No, sir.
Oh.
No?
I do have one more thing.
All right.
Uh, do we take down the one hundred fifty-year anniversary banners?
No, sir, not yet.
We got it?
Um, yeah, this, yeah, probably next couple of months, I guess. Maybe it's, it's getting, it's getting close to it.
We need to think two about putting out that second library kiosk.
Okay.
What are we doing here in Wellsburg Station?
What is that?
That, that's finally, I'll be out front. It's, you put, yeah, take a look.
Did anybody take it and leave it?
Oh, yeah.
And our food pantry is getting used quite a bit, by the way. It, it, people are really using it up a lot.
What's that, food pantry?
We have a little food pantry next in front of the library, both the little garden side. And there's food there, and there's some, I think, Ms. Rachel is bringing, your mom is bringing some, and I've put some stuff in there. And I think there's another young lady. And it's, it's empty quite a bit lately, so.
Who's going in there? Who's, who's getting?
Uh, I don't have no idea. I usually, I, I don't see anybody. Um, it's, it's usually when I'm not there that I, that I come back and I see that it's gone. So, a lot, a lot of food is getting, so there's some people that are actually using it. And since we're not putting it anywhere, the only people that would know it's there would be the people that are local. Because we don't, nobody else, we don't have it, we don't announce it in anywhere that we have this. Because else we'd have everybody in Food County there, but, so it's just for the locals, I, and so it's, it's people that are local who are using it.
I didn't even know about it, though.
So, bring a can next time you have a council meeting.
That's a good idea.
We'll put it up.
That's all I have. Do you know if there is a free library in Wellsburg Station?
No, I don't have anything like that.
No, I didn't know that, okay.
Could be interesting. An interesting idea.
Where's, where's that area?
Right by the high school.
Right across the street from Cowee.
Okay.
You said you had, you had, you knew, let's, let's put in there.
You are.
Mm-hmm. On, on Williams Circle. That's Williams.
I don't know where we put it in Wellsburg. We'd have to look around.
Oh, that's on Williams.
You've got a lot of foot traffic going, and a lot of people in the neighborhood walk, walk their dogs.
Same, that's what I'm thinking.
Run their bikes, walk, you know, run or walk.
If we can find a corner lot somewhere over there.
Plenty of good corners. I mean, it's just, you know, the homeowner, who would be up for it. I imagine most of residents probably pretty able to do it also.
You know, if you want to put, do a second one, they're not that, they wouldn't be that expensive to put together.
We had the one that, the, the food pantry was donated to us. So, we got someone that can make it.
Didn't the Baptist church make the first one, the, the kiosk?
This, the very, very first one or the one at the library?
No, the very first one.
I don't know.
I thought whenever we were doing the, doing the revamp of the library, one of the guys that was there told me that he had been involved in that.
Okay.
Because he's had a machine shop in his garage, you know, sauce.
Yeah, that would have been Marty Kent.
Yeah, there you go. That's who it was.
Well, you know, they may have then. Because I know the one that we have in the shed is branded free little library. And I don't remember if that one's branded out there or not. I'm not sure.
Is that something we can get that, uh, the public works got to do?
Uh, yes, about that. However, he, uh, he got too busy, yeah. Between his business and two, two children, he, uh, he tendered his resignation, unfortunately. So, we've got that reposted on the website. So, if you know someone that's looking for a part-time public works position, let us. for a part-time public works position, let us know, because we're we're looking for one. Alex?
I'm uh, just spitballing, I'm curious, what, I'd like to do some research, maybe me and you Blue or other council members, how we can talk to, about modernizing the internet for the town here. I know a lot of the surrounding areas are getting, I'm sure twelve parks will be getting gig speed uh internet from, I'm assuming AT&T, because it's the number one provider. I know they're already providing it to a lot of Turin, and I'm wondering how we can talk to them to bring in that fiber over into our towns, so we can offer that to our residents as well, because, I mean, as, you know, we go farther and farther into the future, people work from home, I mean, that's a big thing people are looking for as far as utilities, when they move to areas or even when they bring businesses to areas, is that they know they have, you know, uh massive amounts of bandwidth that can support whatever they're doing, especially with more people relying on video and uploading and downloading as a part of their business, so. Uh I think in Wellsburg, we have Spectrum, the service isn't bad or anything, but it's not what, I I wouldn't, it's starting to become what I wouldn't consider modern anymore, I mean, we're on the, everyone's switching to gig internet, all the surrounding neighborhoods and new stuff is getting it, so um I wonder if the town maybe could inquire with AT&T or someone if we could get together and just find out why they haven't decided to bring that here yet, probably it's a customer base thing, I'm not sure, but.
We have it in our subdivision, I've been in my subdivision for sixteen years and started out with AT&T. And they came about three years ago and offered fiber, and they dug in the lines, but it took them a long time, and we still don't have great service out in San Luis, out in the country, but they have um lists of neighborhoods, so if you can talk to somebody, you should get on the list.
I mean, new construction is is getting it, no doubt, I mean, they're they're putting, any, twelve parks will have it, uh what is the name of behind Turin, Grace uh?
Grace.
Grayston Forest, I think it's called, they're all on gig internet, I mean, and it smokes anything that, you know, we can offer here in Sharpsburg, so. It's just something to think about going forward, we're talking about all these infrastructure projects, uh I think that's something the town needs a little bit to developing in in the future as well.
So are you, do you want to increase the size and capacity of the lines that the providers are bringing in? Or do you wanna try to throw up a signal and put wifi up for the town, because it's too competing?
That would be cool, we could do that, but I'm talking about getting the fiber optic infrastructure, they're probably putting it in right next door to twelve parks, I mean, we're not that far for them just to bring it over and be able to offer it to, you know, the town, Dixie Dogs, all our local businesses, you know, to be on it as well as, and including my neighborhood and uh, you know, the surrounding other residences all over town, I mean, we're kind of sandwiched in by it, but it's not offered to us. And it's just an infrastructure thing.
And you know, an interesting thing.
You make a good point about the wifi, that would be a great thing to offer, you know, in the town. I know Spectrum told me that they have wifi towers now that you can access if you're in a certain area, uh and get off of cell service, and I I didn't stay on the phone long enough to ask the guy how that works, but and where these wifi towers are, but uh, you know, so that's another new thing that's coming.
So Floyd, if you would like to, if you wanna start with GMA, and then I'll start with maybe Georgia Power and Cali F A EMC. Um not this section, but last, the previous section, the legislature gave the EMCs um the authority to offer broadband and uh internet ISP services. So I'm wondering with Cali F A EMC taking part in the town, with them having the ability to do that, if that would be interesting, because that would cover most of the commercial side east of fifty-four. I don't know where the line is between Spectrum and AT&T, we have a contact with Spectrum, we can get with Elston to find out about that. I don't know an AT&T person off the top of my head that I can probably find one. So if you wanna talk to GMA about upgrading internet?
Okay.
I've had both Spectrum and AT&T, they run off the same line in my house.
You had both of them at your house, okay.
Well, please, AT&T, I mean, they just come in, change boxes and, but they're off the same line.
Because, see, I have always heard that only one provider can service the town, but you have, you know, here we've got three of them that are right there, so.
Oh, well, two, Spectrum and AT&T.
And then the EMCs can offer, and I don't know if Cali F A offers that or not.
The subdivision with Spectrum offered, they weren't taking any residential, they offered the homeowners commercial lines, which cost more to have, you know, to have their service, and then AT&T came in and wiped them out. They, they also put, AT&T put a stop to any new customers at one point, so people went to Spectrum and they, the homeowners association did, and they offered them commercial, a uh, commercial line, and that cost way more than residential line. So they're gonna do it to their benefit, you know?
So we'll add the cable and internet service to the projects list and start investigating that. We actually had a quote started for for wifi, or at least downtown area wifi, because if we could get something high enough, it's no bigger than the town is, we can probably cover it fairly, tech- technically fairly easily, but, you know, how we would do it, administer it's a whole other thing, but we'll we'll add that to the.
Okay, I guess, yeah.
That's it. Um any other questions from public?
I, I wanted to mention, we're gonna have Dorby City Weeks at the end of April, and which is why we're having these pictures taken, and we're gonna um give them some information to the mayor, some pictures of all the activities, and you would be surprised how many activities we have had um this year, in less than a year, so it's really exciting uh that we're gonna be able to provide some great information and pictures of of what we are doing and how our town is growing. And as a side note, there are more and more people that are finding out about us, um I've done, I've I've looked at the numbers for our webpage, and the number of people that are hitting our webpage has gone up, the number of people that are signing up is, has gone up, so we are definitely getting, I'm going to places and I go, I work in the town of Sharpsburg, I'm the community, I'm working the community center, oh, we've seen you on Chatty Newton or Life on Peachtree City, whatever. So we are getting out there, and so this is really a good thing for our community, that we're getting out there.
Do you think it would benefit us to update the interior of this place, the, for as a venue?
Absolutely, absolutely. And if we haven't got any extra cash, we could use another building, we actually, we actually could, could uh, use a second building, to be honest, because that's how many, I, there, I'm not able to do scheduled classes right now in the evenings, because we we've got people already are in those times, but we could offer more evening classes if we had another building or another place to do, to do some of this, so.
Do you think on lack of commercial facilities and the general look in here, or is it uh, maybe turn some people off, but maybe reconsider otherwise, for as a venue, maybe?
No, not, not really, we do.
People love this community.
They love us, we do need tables, we need, we need some new tables, we definitely need some, some upgrades as far as tables, we need a little bit of spooching up with the painting, the floor is 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 hungry for some help, um but uh, so other than that, I mean, I think a little bit of spooching up would be definitely a, a wonderful thing. Uh if the Beckham House comes, becomes the the town uh center, then we do have those rooms there, which we could have a couple of options, we can make them in changing rooms, which I think the, we talked about changing rooms for parties, or we can use them as classrooms. But that's gonna be very tiny, and my concern is that I'd like to have places that are open, we are using the library for classes as well, so when we're we're maximizing the all our, all our, our floor space here, right now. If, we can't have it here at night, we're having it in the library.